Off the day, the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, October 6, 2020, and the time is 12:31 PM. Notices for this oversight hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, September 29, and again on Sunday, October 4, 2020. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, September 29 and October 4. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Guam Legislature's MIS staff and committee staff. The host of this hearing will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Each member will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying for a round and will be provided another round if needed. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending, beginning with Senator Kelly Marsh Titano. Thank you, Senator. Our minority leader, Senator Telotitigui. Thank you, Senator. And Senator Will Castro. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I'd also like to thank the State Historic Preservation Officer, Mr. Patrick Luhon, for joining us today, and our state archaeologist, John Mark Joseph. Prior to this hearing, those testifying today were all sworn in by the Guam Legislature Sergeant-at-Arms, Mr. Tom Unzio. Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms. So the agenda for today's public oversight hearing is with the State Historic Preservation Office regarding burials and historic properties and a status update on historic properties impacted by the MIT, the Mariana Islands Training and Testing Area. I'd also like to recognize the presence of my vice chairman, Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you for joining us, Senator. Continuing with the agenda, during July 13th Joint Informational Briefing with the Committee on Environment on the Status of Environmental and Cultural Impacts to Magua and the Texan, the SH, State Historic Preservation Office, I will refer to him as the SHPO throughout this hearing. The SHPO shared that additional discoveries of human remains from the Lati period were found where construction is occurring for the marine main contolment area in the NCTS area, also known as Finagazin. And we're being analyzed by the state archaeologists with the Navy. Today, I'll be asking the SHPO to share some of the significant findings of the burial and the plan for preservation in place and reburial. Also discussed at the July 13th Informational Briefing was the significance of the Texan and historic properties in the Talalu area, which is DoD's proposed site for the live-fire training range complex. During that hearing, the SHPO discussed the possibility of requesting to amend the 2011 programmatic agreement and emphasized preserving historic properties in place, particularly where the multi-purpose machine gun range, the largest firing range of the live-fire training range, is supposed to be built. This proposed range would encompass approximately 59 acres. It is twice the size of the other four ranges combined that have already been cleared, which is 28 acres total. Two weeks after the informational briefing, instead of calling for an amendment to the programmatic agreement through stipulation 14, the SHPO invoked stipulation 13 of the programmatic agreement to object to actions carried out or proposed in the implementation of the PA. During this process, the parties are supposed to consult for up to 45 days to resolve the objection, in which time, we hope was called to any clearing or grading activities on the proposed multi-purpose machine gun range site. In a press release, it stated that the SHPO was calling for greater, more comprehensive archaeological surveys to be completed before work can begin in the final phase of this project. This assertion is based on new archaeological findings, ancestral remains unanticipated by the original review process. During today's hearing, we will get an update from him regarding the Northwest Field Historic Properties and what has transpired since invoking stipulation 13. We will also get an update today on the programmatic agreement negotiations with the Navy regarding the protection of historic properties within the 2020 Mariana Islands Testing and Training Area. The previous programmatic agreement for the 2009 Merck Mariana Islands Range Complex was set to expire on September 30, 2020. All right, so Mr. Luhon, I've already introduced you and the state archaeologists. And I want to thank you again for being here today. And we could begin by sharing some of the significant findings of the burial site at Finagazin. And please provide as much detail as you can regarding the human remains found at the burial site for the public, Senator.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Tulahe and all the senators that are on board. I'm sure there's others that are watching this as well. So thanks for allowing us some time to share with the public the latest and greatest in regards to the SHPO's office. So I guess we can start with the burials that were found on Camp Blas and since last that we've presented to the legislature and to the public. After the last, was it three or four remains? Four. So none, none has been, there's been other fragments such as a tooth was found just last week. And that's at that area of the Orchid Conservation Area, the one that we were, looked at to the east of the burials. So we are in the plans of the design of the burial monument on Camp Blas. And we're in conjunction with the Marine Corps, with Albert Borha and his team for the language of the, what the language of the depiction on the monument will be. Going back to that one tooth that was recovered last week. So I made sure that all the requirements and guidelines to discovery is in action. As a matter of fact, and I reminded the Marines that that was actually how the initial burial was found. It started off with the finding of a tooth. And then with the study and the excavation around that was when we found the first burial. So we're taking the same precautionary measures as we did the first time around with the most current finding of the tooth. Any questions regarding the reburial on that? For that one location?
For the new site that you're talking about, where you found the tooth, could you please tell us how far that is from the place where you're calling the burials?
Maybe 50 meters?
I believe a little bit more, but I'm not real sure on that right now, exactly the distance of that.
Does the place have a name? Is it a different site? I mean, this.
We just got their hard copy today.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll follow.
It's a new finding, so we're definitely going to be on top of that. The initial look was probably 50 to 100 meters southeast of the burial site.
Right, you're correct. Yeah.
Okay, and so let's go back to the burial site then. That's what I wanted to focus on today. And could you just give us, could you just tell us why you are describing this as a burial site? And this is as far as I can include, the only burial site that you are, the only area that is being designated a burial site by the SHPO at this time during, in this whole Finagazin or the Naval Communications Center area. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, so other bone fragments have been found, like for instance, in the Magua area, which is about a mile south of the existing burial sites, but none in the, in the capacity of full, you know, a full human structure. So when it's, when you have like a tooth or a fragment of a bone, we don't consider that as a burial site. But this one was considered that because you had the full structure of the human remains. And then you had multiples of it, whether it's a skeletal or, or in this case, it was from the, from the rib section all the way down for, you know, down to the ankles.
Okay, how many, how many burials were found?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, Senator, we have two intact burials. And we have two that were disturbed and looked like they were put back into one hole that was dug or whatever. Looked like somebody had disturbed them, perhaps maybe in the 50s or whatever, recognized what they were, or in the 40s. And then they, they put them back in one spot. So we have two that are co-mingled. And then we have two intact burials that are separate.
So four?
Yes, four.
And you had described in the newspaper and to me that, that one of these was found without a skull and that in place of a skull, pottery was found. Could you please describe that?
Yeah, so I think, you know, John Mark can attest to this, that this is the first findings from an archaeological standpoint where remains, where the skull was not in place and it was pottery. So the only other example of this within the Marianas was up in Saipan, which I think it was twice, they have two findings of that. So, you know, the, the final reports are still being done from the field archaeologist, the lady that you saw out there in the field. But when they, you know, when, when they discovered it, they did not move the pottery until we gave them the go-ahead to go ahead and see what was underneath. And sure enough, when they did, there was no, there was no skeletal remains. So, you know, it goes back to probably the old burial traditions of the old Chamoros, you know, with the removal of the skeleton. So they're definitely going to be studying the cases up at Saipan and, and see how that has, does it even correlate with the, with the practices?
Okay, I think we're having some issues with the, with the legislature's website. Just if you could just hold on one minute. Ryan, are we okay?
YouTube is down. We're working on it right now.
Should we pause?
If you want to.
All right. Thank you, welcome back. We were on brief recess due to some technical difficulties, but we are resuming our oversight hearing of the State Historic Preservation Officer. And we're talking right now about burial, burials found in the recent marine contolment area that's being constructed. Okay, and so the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer, Mr. Patrick Luhon, is about to describe more about the burials that were found. What do we know about people that were buried there?
Yeah, so thanks again, Senator Tulahe and the rest of the senators. It is the initial archaeological findings is that it's estimated about 1,000 years old. That was, and that was with the help of an osteologist that came in to do some, to look at the remains as well. So within the perimeter of about, maybe a radius of what, 20 feet?
You mean.
Where those four?
Yeah, so I imagine within probably a 30, 30, yeah.
So yeah, a radius between 20 and 30 feet. Four, four burials were found. And since then, they have been covered as a, as an order of preservation in place. And we've already moved on to the designing of the monument. So what was supposed to be there within the Camp Blas infrastructure footprint was a parking lot for an adjacent building. And so we've, we've worked with Camp Blas and JRM to redesign their, their parking lot. So they've, they've done that. And within the, the radius of, even further out of the findings that they're gonna, they're, they've already gave us an example, a draft monument that would depict the people that were found there and giving a historical perspective in English and in Chamorro for the signage. So we're working, I have Mr. Grido working on that with them. And so, you know, we hope to get that up soon.
Well, can you tell us, back to, before we talk more about the monument, back to the burials, can you tell us, can you, you said that they, that they've dated them to be 1,000 years buried? Is that what you said? And are they Chamorro? What is their ethnic background? Do we know their ages? What, what do we know? Could you tell us everything you know about them? I think this is something the public has been wanting to know.
Right, hi, this is John Mark Joseph, the state archaeologist. Right now, we're at a limited amount of information that we know. We know that they're pre-contact, approximately, you know, 1,000 years old from what the information has come into us at this point in time. We will have more as the osteology report and all comes out and the other reports and the artifacts found in and around that area. Most likely, these are, burials were associated with a house or maybe perhaps a latte house that was there one time. But right now, it's all speculation until we get the report and are able to verify everything with the archaeologists and osteologists that's on, on site.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months since the findings. And so we anticipate probably another, another couple of months before we receive the final report on that.
What about the ages of the people that were buried?
I think we have perhaps, I think, one or two adult males or one female and one child. I believe that that is what we have right now.
All right, and I know you described that in one burial, well, what, where you found one, there were two, two sets of human remains in the same burial spot. And that, since we discussed that, I, I found a report on another site on Guam where they described that as having occurred as well. And that they, it was their theory, or the archaeologist's theory at the time, that, that clans, that people of the same clan were buried possibly in the same spots over, over different years. And that, that was not unusual. But in your experience, Mr. Joseph, our state archaeologist, is that an unusual finding or, yeah? Do you have any other theories on that?
Right, and I have to go with what I've been told by the archaeologists on site. They believe that the burials were perhaps separate at one time or were impacted maybe during the 1940s, 1950s. And the reason they believe that is because in the burials, I think they had modern artifacts that did not match with the remains there.
All right, okay, could you tell us maybe what types of artifacts were in this area? And how do you know that you've found the entire burial grounds?
Basically, basically, right now, they've been excavating out from when they found the tooth. So once they started finding the burials, then they went out further. What had not been excavated, the Marine Corps said that we're going to stop and this will all be fenced in. So we have, we have the whole area that will be fenced in. We have the burials that are, have been discovered there and all that. If there is another spot in there where there may be a burial or whatever, right now, we're not going to disturb that individual. Or at least, that's what we have in plan.
And I think you described to me at one point that where you found the tooth, you went out a certain number of feet. This is like the process where you go out certain number of feet and, and you, you look in that area. And you keep doing that process. With every finding, you go out again, that same number of feet until you find nothing. And that's pretty much how the perimeter was established. Is that correct?
Correct, they, they put a 25-meter grid around that. And then they move out from, from there if they keep finding parts of individuals or something. Because during farming exercises of maybe the 1930s, 40s, or perhaps during the construction of the military use of the property there in the 1950s, things, if an individual had got hit, he may have gotten moved a certain amount. So they keep looking to see if they can discover the location of the individual.
Okay, all right. And so we're going to talk a little bit more about the details of the memorial. And, but for now, the, the bodies have been, you said, covered. I, I am interpreting that to me, reburied. Is that like, they're formally buried again? And the studying is done? And now it's like, the field work is done? And the archaeologists and osteologists are, are working in their labs? So.
Right.
I'm going to open it up for, for just on this burial, because I know it's a very, you know, it's a big finding. And I want my colleagues to be able to just talk about this in particular. And then we'll talk more about the, the plans for the site, the plans for other sites in more detail. But just as to these burials, if you have questions, I'm going to allow Senator Perez, if you had any.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just a clarification. Are these burials different from the ones that were discussed during the programmatic agreement annual workshop? Are these new, new findings from that time?
They are the same.
Okay. Okay, and then in regards to the reburials of the tooth and such, I know some of the concerns that was raised, I raised regarding that was potential loss of information when you move things from the original site, or so-called original site. And I guess the response was that it's documented properly. As far as reinterment, has there been any changes in regards to, or what is the procedures for reinterment of?
Okay, then, actually, Senator Perez, then let me let them talk about that in detail, because we, we didn't really get to the, that yet. We, but why don't we just complete it then? Go ahead and finish all the discussion regarding this site. Do you have a copy of your plans for the site, your, your reinterment? And you told us about the area it's going to cover. But do you have a copy of, for example, what will be written as to the history of the people buried there or the settlement area or anything in general? And are these consistent with the burial guidelines? If you could just explain that. So Guam has existing burial guidelines. I posted it on the information available for the senators for this hearing so that they could review it. And the burial guidelines pretty much say to bury in the same place as the project when possible. So that's what's happening in this instance. So, okay, but I'll let you, the SHPO, please speak to this.
John Mark Joseph, King State Archaeologist. If I may clarify, the burials were left in place. They were not taken out of context. All the measurements and all for the remains were done in place. The individuals were not removed. The individuals were not removed. We're talking a, a thousand-year-old bones that were kind of in a acidic soil. They are very, very fragile. And so this is one of the reasons why they were all left in place.
Yeah, we, we were, uh, you know, there was a, the, a time, um, uh, a time limit that we can just keep those exposed for just so long before they started to get real fragile and, 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 uh,
Dry out.
And dry out. Um, even just to, uh, you know, bring you up, uh, Senator Tulahe, we, we had to keep it moist, um, you know, before they, they covered it up with, with soil. Uh, so once, you know, the, the intent is to, to get the, um, measurements done quickly as possible. Um, and, and also have the osteologists review it and study it and, and then cover it up. So, um, you know, that is after the fact that we've already, uh, established, uh, preservation in place and that they were not to remove the bones from, from where they laid.
And according to the burial guidelines, there will be a monument made and, and so you have plans for that. We haven't seen the plans, but, uh, they follow the guidelines pretty much. Um, are there any exceptions?
Yes, so, yes, so, so far, yes, so far they have, um, and right now they're going through the, the proposed language of, uh, on the signage. And so our, our in-resident, uh, expert, Mr. Joe Garrido, is working on that, um, with, with the representatives from, from Camp Blas. So I think, uh, with, uh, the design and everything, I think, I think the, the public will, will be happy with that. We'll put that up on our website, um, once that we get a little bit, uh, closer with the approval of, of the signage. And we can share that, um, on our website once, once we get a clearer draft.
Well, I think it would be, uh, nice to get some input, uh, from maybe others in the community. If they saw your draft, that they would be able to give you some feedback and maybe, maybe some good feedback also. Did we confirm whether these, uh, persons who are buried here are tomorrow?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. And so just to clarify again, this is, uh, what do you call this site?
The, uh, what's it?
This is, uh,
Um, I'd, I'd have to go back to look at it. It's, uh, seven fat?
Seven fatting, yeah.
Pardon?
I think it's seven fatting. I'd have to verify that.
What's the first word? Oh, seven, but, seven, seven, seven? This is, uh, this is a mile and a half from Magua. I just wanna clarify that. And it's, uh, fifty meters from where you found a, a new, a, a tooth now that you're going to study that area. Is the area where the tooth was found, has that been cleared yet or is that, uh, what is the, what is the status of that area? Is it a forest right now or is it cleared or what is?
You, there's been initial clearing, uh, but they're walking through it again with the monitors that we've established, um, within the, within the framework of the, of the PA. Um, and so that's how they, they, they came across that. Um, so, you know, we're, we're anticipating, we're anticipating, uh, you know, with the, with the initial experience of, of the, the first, um, remains that there, there's a probability. And so we, we've put in a, uh, an added, uh, request to, to have a, you know, do a thorough job in, in seeking that out because of our initial experience.
Okay. And then if we could just, since, uh, this probably discussion might all blend together, in regards to Magua, now Magua was the place where there were Lati, Lu song, earthen ovens and other things found, but those were pretty much cleared. So Magua has been cleared. It's been the subject of a lot of controversy, but it's a mile and a half from this, this, uh, burial area. And, um, at the time or originally, we, we were being told that this Magua area was not a settlement or it was only a temporary settlement, but it was really the area that had the, the Lati and the Lu song. And so, but there you found no burials. Is that correct? Or please, yeah, tell us if any, um, human remains were found in, in Magua.
That is, that is correct. There was no, uh, official burials found in Magua. Uh, they did have some bone fragments, um, that were found. And also, uh, there was no, I mean, the, the Haligi and the, um, the other parts of the Lati stones were, none were in Sito, which means that they weren't considered in its original spot. They've been, uh, bulldozed before, so that's more than highly likely back in the, when was it, the forties?
Uh, and, and the fifties, probably, uh, forty's or fifty's there.
Yeah, so that's probably when the, the initial destruction, uh, occurred. And then it, you, you took about, you know, fifty-plus years of regrowth. Uh, so, so the, the Lati stones that were found in Magua since then, uh, were not considered in Sito. So, uh, but they've, they've, like you said, they, they did, um, uh, remove it. And according to Camp Blas and, and Mr. Borja, that they do have, uh, plans to, let me see, I'm just reading his, there, there's a conceptual design to do some type of, uh, signage and possibly, um, they're, they're making a Lati park, South in the guy in Lati Park. Oh, no, no, not that one. Um, they're gonna do something with Magua, the sediment site to identify, uh, what was there with, with some type of, uh, historical signage.
All right. I know that, uh, I have asked you, uh, on a couple of occasions, that the Magua site be, be recognized, especially because it's up, up, it's closer to the cliff than the burial ground. And it, it was actually, despite what we were told in, at, in the beginning, found to, you know, have, uh, many more things there. And so, yeah, I, I know that I asked you at one point that the Lati and the Lu song be returned to the area. But, uh, if you're saying this is not the original area for that Lati and Lu song, if, um, yeah, I don't know. But I know that there've been different talks. We've been talking for years about what we're going to do with Magua site, you know, whether they were gonna be able to preserve it in place. Apparently it was not because it, it got cleared. And whether they were going to be able to establish a site outside the fence. Uh, but I'm happy to hear that they're going to now, is that, uh, put some kind of permanent, uh, marker on the site. All right, I'm gonna open it up for the, um, for my, for the, my colleagues. I'm just, okay, so now we're talking about the.
Yeah, real quick, Senator, I, I, I'm, uh, I'll just read this by, uh, verbatim, uh, from Mr. Borja, uh, that they're looking to have a single Haligi and capstone adjacent to the concrete stellar with dedication plaque to memor- memorialize the original location of the Magua fragmentary ancestral remains. So they, they do, they do plan on putting something up there specifically in the Magua area.
All right. But those, those things that they plan, those are subject to your approval, right? I mean, that's where our input are, not, not my input, but the, the public's input as to what is fitting is appropriate? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And another.
So also, uh, that is there, it, uh, there, there are plans to build the, uh, the, uh, what do you call it? The visitor's center, uh, right outside the main gate. Uh, that was not originally part of the, the plans, but that has evolved with all of these findings and, and they're, they're working with the Guam Preservation Trust on the plans for that to make it a, a nice conceptual, uh, visitor's center with some of the artifacts to be placed in there.
Hmm, okay. All right. Again, I'm urging for some, yeah, if you could show what you are intending or what you are agreeing to and the public can, you know, maybe give you some good, some additional insight or suggestions. All right, Senator Perez, your recognition.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Senator Tulahe. Um, yeah, I guess the, the question that I have, I think, you know, we've always promoted preservation in place and even if it's not the complete, um, you know, skeletal remains. And I think just even these fragments, um, you know, I think provide information that may not be so apparent today, but maybe in the future with new eyes and new set of perspectives. Um, so I do wanna, you know, encourage you to, whatever fragments that exist that you find, that they be treated as if they were, you know, the full skeletal remains. Um, again, I think that's something that I, I'm going to advocate for continually. Um, yeah, the, I guess it's, uh, it's kind of heartbreaking to see monuments being placed um, in, in, in lieu of, you know, the actual site. And, yeah, I just, um, that's just my position. I don't have a question right now, um, but that's just something I wanted to say. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Senator Marsh, back to you.
To us, Masih, Madam Chair. Yeah, um, so it's very interesting to hear that this may date back as far as a thousand years because when I was talking to archaeologists, um, years ago, uh, several years ago, about both, um, Taillalo, the area uh, above La Texan and this area. And they were saying that we wouldn't find burials, that burials just didn't exist in places like this. And so, um, this really speaks to the value, as has been mentioned, of places like this and, um, he- helping us understand the record. And in my, my perspective, the importance of preserving them because there are too few of them in the northeast. And, um, I, I'm just not even sure what is left, like if there is, uh, a village left to preserve for the record to represent it at all. Could, could you speak to the value? Um, the Historic Preservation Office has said this is going to change our understanding. So could you speak a little bit to the value, uh, we don't know all the answers yet, but of, of findings like this?
Sure, certainly. Um, you know, this is, um, I think in, in a couple of occasions, I've mentioned the, uh, the uniqueness of this burial, especially with the, uh, pottery that was placed on the head of one of the burials. So we are, are very, very, um, interested, um, and excited to, to see the outcome of that report once it is finalized. Um, definitely has changed the dynamics and the structure of the northern plateau of what, what we thought it was. Um, and, and so, and, and heads with that, uh, it led for me to, uh, invoke that stipulation thirteen north of Camp Blas up at, uh, at, um, the, uh, firing range. And it, it, despite them being, uh, two totally different areas and projects, uh, it's all encompassing when we look at the, the, the holistic view of, um, of how our, our ancient tomorrows practiced. And so, um, you know, I, I think we, uh, you, you senators as, as major stakeholders are, are, are just as interested as we are. And, you know, I think, uh, right now we're still kind of, we're, we're in the theory stage. And, uh, as we move forward to where, where we allow the, the archaeologists that are, are, are working this, this project, um, still give them a little bit more time before they finalize it and, and then we can, we can work with them as far as, you know, creating that new picture of, of how our, our ancient tomorrows, uh, utilize the, the northern plateau. And it, it definitely changed our view of how we operate. Um, not only with the military, but also with, with the, with our, our residents, our civilians and, and how they, um, go about the development of their land and what they use it and, and how we, we review it. And so this has really changed, uh, our, our daily mission. Um, and not only in the northern plateau, but we're, 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 we're actually, um, changing that perspective even in the central and in the south, um, on, on different projects. So it, it really has shifted the, the approach and, and, and the, and the mission of what we do here in the office.
Well, um, yeah, I mean, that's an important shift. And, and if I could just get clarification to make sure, um, it sounded like we're talking about two different monuments, that one is gonna be for the burial and then another, another is for Magua. Am I correct in that?
You are correct.
Okay, so with the, the one for the burials, what, what shape and size is that?
Um, uh, i- if I may, right now we're probably looking, I don't know if you've been down to the, to the monument at Dan Dan. Um, basically, um, we have a monument there and a, and a plaque, um, at Dan Dan, uh, for, uh, eight burials. And what we have are a few, um, the, the, they go back to Senator Perez, um, for the, um, individual pieces that we're finding of, um, of, of human remains. Uh, basically these individuals where we're finding them are out of context. Uh, they're, they're on a, a back dirt pile here or have been moved there. And so we do not have the full burials. So we're gonna bring those all together and then describe that, um, you know, where they're from and put those in the monument. And then the monument will also explain the, the four individuals that are found in that area that is being conserved, uh, preserved in place. And also that, um, there may be more burials in this area that they haven't excavated, but we're not, um, uh, the Marines have, um, committed to saving that area and not doing any more work and basically leaving it in its natural, um, habitat.
Yeah, for the record also, uh, Senator Tulahe, it's, uh, Saban and Fading is the area of the reburial, Saban and Fading.
Okay. If I could just ask, um, or, or comment, uh, on one last one. So with the, the Magua memorial, you said that it's going to be a Tasa and a Haligi. Are, are those the actual, I mean, are those authentic pieces or are they replicated out of concrete or something?
It, it's gonna be the original that they found, but, you know, as close to where they found it in Magua. Um, so yes, it, it won't be a replica.
Okay. And so I'd just like to make a request. Uh, one of the things that's been brought to my attention over the years is there are a lot of people that are very concerned that, um, Lati are, are represented in certain ways that the more the time passes, the, the less we're understanding their real situation. And so seeing singular Lati, uh, a lot of people don't understand whether there were four for a house or six for a house. So I would request that there be at least six so that there is an accurate understanding of what they were. They were, they were not alone. They were always for a house or some sort of structure. And there were always at least six, at least for the most part, um, uh, from what I've ever heard. So I, I'd like to request to push for that because I think that's really important.
We'll, we'll get a look into that, uh, Senator. I'm not sure what the, uh, the inventory that they found, as I mentioned, you know, it's, uh, none is in, in Sito. So, so it, it could very well be, uh, pushed to the side and only one was found. But I, I'll get back with them and, and, and see what they can do, um, as far as, uh, if it's even possible to, to have a full set.
Yeah, I, I think, um, when we've seen those photographs, and I know, um, the chairwoman was there, uh, I, I think I remember seeing at least three or so, but, but even, I mean, and, and, you know, people who are invested would have to decide, not me, but even if there were three authentic ones, um, there, there may be some way either out of concrete or from some other ones that, it, it would need to be, uh, tomorrow representatives that would decide. But, um, anyways, yes, to please push for that. Senator Masih, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, I've asked that, that the shipful's office consider putting all the Lati and Lu song that were found at Magua, back at Magua because to recognize this area, it's a village. It was a village recognized on all the Spanish maps. And it, it, uh, so it's very likely that, uh, it's the. So it's very likely that uh it's the Lati were not. Exactly at the same spot that that they were still in the village. Or, you know, um in the area for sure, and that there are burials in this area. And so we have not found. Those burials from the Magua village. But I just think uh we are, you know, we cannot be blind to that and we have to and we should acknowledge. And I think. Seeing the areas like Magua, for example, how close it is to the cliff, how close it is to the other villages of Aputo. And the other, I I think there are other villages there. Um. That's all relevant to our knowledge. And we've been asking for quite a while that these. Cultural landscapes be recognized. And and so that's why um. Even though it's behind the fence, if we can preserve the cultural landscape in, you know, as as much as possible, where these locations are, where these ancient villages were. Um I I feel I feel like. That is the thing to do, but you know, uh I would, that's why I I would. Very much like more input as to these plans because. I very much recognize the efforts of the shippo when they built the monuments, uh I mean, all around the island, the one at the um. And then is uh when they're building the road, they 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 created a memorial. Up there. And I've been there and it it is a beautiful memorial, but I do not think it's ever going to come close to. What you we have been and seen, you know, um. At Magua, it, you know, where that is in. It, you know, right at the correct site, the Lati were there, Luson. And uh that's the site where, you know, you found the earthen ovens, the artifacts, oh, I don't know, but uh. Uh I'll just, that's just my ideas. And I I'm just repeating what I've told you earlier to the shippo, but I I I agree with you, Senator Marsh. Uh. Senator Tai, please, you're nice, on on the burial.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Uh papa day to the shippo, um everyone there, really appreciate the work that you're doing. Um in fact, we had a um interview earlier and. We were talking about how grateful we are for some of these nonprofit organizations who are staying on top of it, you know, and. So so, you know, it was, I'm a visual kind of person, you know, uh Patrick, and I was hoping that the shippo can create. Uh type of map uh that everyone, the public can can see and watch. With this military buildup, showing the village, the village names, and where all these um artifacts are found. And where you're going to put it, where it's laid to rest. Um where it's very confusing for the public. I mean. We want to be transparent and and definitely accountable. So. Um I was hoping, do you have any kind of um mapping system that we we can show and and watch as you progress through this whole um findings?
Um so the the Marines have maps of findings. Um let me get with them as far as the sensitivity of it. Um and and just because we this this issue has actually been brought up in the past that we've we've asked for for. Uh clearer um information and we've offered Gov Guam outlets. Uh for them to to help, you know, that we can help get this information out. So another another uh uh task that I will I will follow up, but it's it's been in discussion from from last uh. You know, several oversight hearings or even sidebar meetings that we've had. As far as sharing such information like this. Um again, there's reasons behind uh the the sensitivity of letting uh uh, you know. The public know where cultural resources are located, whether it's in base or off base. Um and that's, you know, that that just goes way back to the origination of the National Historic Preservation Act. Um, you know, for for pilfering reasons or, you know, theft. So. Uh we we have to be very careful when when we when we share that type of uh information. Uh with the public, but but no take in on that, Senator, and I'll I'll get back with uh, you know, with the the powers that be over at Camp Blas to. To see what we can do to kind of share uh some mapping systems.
Uh okay, um I appreciate that. And I I know there's some issues, you know, um. With the federal government. I'm not looking to find out what the federal government is building. I'm just looking at, you know, our lands, our historical uh sites and where it can be, you know, designated on the map. It helps. And it and it, the reason why, too, it helps to, we're gonna teach our children where they're at right now, you know, they're the next generation that has to fight for this. So. It's it's helpful, kind of like a school thing. The next one is the the guidelines that were provided on the um information. It says general guideline. Guidelines for agro agricultural burials. Um section and then burial guidelines amendments, March two thousand ten. Is there anything on here, Patrick? Uh that that shippo or even the Department of Parks or Rec would like to revise? I mean, you know, when. Time goes by, there are new changes in the world, new things that you can provide, new i- ideas, incentives, scientifical findings that would actually help. Um your agency to uh maintain these um. Findings and keeping things intact. Is there anything on here that needs to be changed or looked at? I I know it could be something large, sorry, Madam Chair, but if there's anything at all, Patrick, that you have that could change. That we can do as legislature, please let us know, you know, that that would make your your job a whole lot easier. And I hope, other than the two of you going to these sites, is there anyone else um that that comes along other than who is hired by the military, their. Um archaeologists? Is there somebody else from the University of Guam that also uh come with you to inspect these sites or these uh findings?
Well, thank you, Senator. Um so going back to the archaeological guidelines. Uh John Mark Joseph, the state archaeologist, is uh working on updating. Uh a new set of archaeological guidelines for for the department. Um so that should be coming out. Uh he said yesterday, so um. But but also, thank you for the offer as far as the help from the legislature. I know Senator Cholahi has been there. Uh we've been, we've been speaking about some other things and how to to ramp up the um. The the posture of this office. We're still, we're as as much as we're doing now. And like this this session here is talking about the military and I've 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 spoken to Senator Cholahi, I'm saying. That the military is not our only customer, right? It's 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 the biggest target, but not our only customer. And and we we have to deal with with. All the development on island and and it and it's 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 really a struggle. Um trying to keep up with it. So I I I am putting some stuff together. Uh to propose through uh Senator Cholahi's office. Uh to to try and get some more help. And I know Senator Cholahi has been a champion of this over the last years, helping, trying to get help for this office. Uh back to your last question, I'm sorry, I I what what was your last comment?
Other than yourself and Mr. Joseph, um and and of course, the the individual hired from the military. Archaeologists, is there anyone else that you bring on board, yeah, to review this?
I mean, our staff, you know, our staff, they're they're all uh, you know, uh archaeologists, uh uh, you know, technicians. Uh that they 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 they've, all of them are are field, you know, they've worked out in the field. Um a couple of them, we've hired them from 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 local archaeological firms that are now part of our staff. So. Yeah, definitely, uh he and I are not the only ones that go out and, you know, our 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 staff that, you know, we stay out there. Uh we we bring them along as well.
Thank you, Patrick. I just, you know, trying to picture it all, you know, and and ensure there's enough eyes out there. And um thank you, Madam Chair. And and you know, I. Do want to mention that something you said about there are other areas other than these sites, you're absolutely right, like. Uh the condo that I live in, there's actually a memorial there for any of um. Uh bones that were retrieved during construction and that to ensure that they are uh buried correctly and and actually near the site. It stays here in this area. So it's good to hear that uh we're gonna try and keep that intact as you move forward on these burials. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Patrick and Mr. Joseph. Thank you.
I had a map uh the last time of uh we had our oversight hearing of uh the Magua area being depicted on the Spanish maps and uh. I wish I could put it up. Well, we'll see before the end of this hearing if that's possible. All right, we will um. Continue, uh just wanted to clarify now. When you when you stand at the place where the burials were found, uh. There was. At the time, a forested area between in the burial and Route Three, you know, it's a it's within your vision. Uh I don't know how far exactly, but is that forest cleared? And I told you at the time I was uh concerned if there are other burials in this area. Yeah, how would we, how can we feel confident that these would be discovered before they are um farmed?
Yeah, so so that little forest area, that's considered the orchid conservation area that it's that they do not plan to. Um to touch that. Um as far as the confidence of other findings, I'll toss that over to John Mark Joseph to to. Ask him what's the archaeological confidence of that project.
Right, uh right now for uh the first stipulation thirteen that found the burials that we're looking at now. And um uh due to the objections I had of the work that was previously done on the northern plateau. Um basically, um uh those. Are kind of written in stone from our first resolution, so those have to be carried on. As we move towards our second stipulation thirteen, where we are looking at the um. Uh P seven thirty-five, the machine gun range. Uh we have implemented a a different methodology there to hopefully get a better grip. And uh get a little bit of foresight into what is going on there before they actually do the work. So we're we're going to be a little bit more stringent on that one. We cannot be that way. We have to go by the protocols that were agreed to um when we did the resolution. Um. Back in um two thousand eighteen. For this stipulation thirteen. So they're following that. They're they're actually, I think, putting more boots on the ground now. Uh they're looking a little bit harder since we've already uh started finding and uh. Kind of changed the paradigm of the way they think of the northern plateau. And the fact that it wasn't um a temporary site that people are actually were living there and. Uh burying their dead. So um as we say, we're looking at the island differently. Um and I feel confident with Marine Corps and them looking hard. At these places that they've got left. And even I think they they still have perhaps some work they're doing here, here and there throughout the. Whole um main concomit. And they're looking hard at those. So um I think they've got a better um. Idea now that um before everybody thought it was kind of temporary. Now we know we've got burials. Full uh intact burials. And uh that the community is watching and the community wants to know that it's done right. And we're watching. We want to know it's done right. So I think they're doing it right. I think they've stepped up to the plate. And are doing their job. We will let you know if we think otherwise.
All right, thank you. Uh so as to that northwest field area where you've described, they're they're looking very carefully. Uh has there been any findings?
Uh right now, they have not started the work. We put in their stipulation before any contracts went out. That that was what was the problem. Prior to um my um objections going in the last time. Was that they went in after they had started the bulldozers. So we were only able to come up with a quick solution to that because as we were negotiating. The bulldozers were going. And uh so we we had to do make a plan quick to to play catch up. Now we're trying to get ahead of the game. So now we're doing a different methodology to go out and look for sites, start exploring those before the bulldozers come.
All right, uh and so for the other um ranges, uh adjacent ranges in this area, on that area. There were some um remains found, parts, uh I guess, uh found and. We saw that those had been collected and put in to storage. We saw this at at uh one of the offices, but. Has there been any discoveries there that have been preserved in place, uh inadvertent discoveries?
Uh no inadvertent discoveries. We worked with the uh Marine Corps on um one of the firing uh ranges and were able to. Um basically skew it from the the plan that they had. And we were able to uh um, I think, uh. Uh save about six sites from even being uh impacted. Um I would have loved to have been able to, you know, perhaps skew it some more, but according to the uh. Uh range control and what they needed for uh the um uh inadvertent um. Not really our indirect um um. Round going off, uh therefore, um they had to keep to that certain layout that they had.
All right.
Um no, uh uh to answer your question, no, we did not have any inadvertent discoveries. On those other ranges that were um uh preserved in place.
Okay. Uh Senators, I think we found the map that I wanted to show you. If we could load that right now. We could load it up as much as possible. You'll see, I I don't know if you, Josh, can you try to point to Magua? We'll start with there's Magua. The Ban and Fading, that's where the burials were found. Uh I think if this line is Route Three. The, yeah, that's Route Three. And of course, you see Aputo over there on the coastline and. Puwa Point, other historic sites, of course, ancient villages. And um and this is why we argued um very hard for.
Yeah, yes.
For these areas to be considered as the all part of a landscape of, yeah, historical, yeah, a cultural landscape. Or I don't know, John Mark, did you want to say something more about this, these areas? Puwa. Could you could you describe Puwa, Puwa Point?
Uh yes, i- if if you notice where uh Magua is i- in this map, this is uh nineteen forty-four. Um in nineteen fifty-four. Uh fifty-four. Basically, Magua was moved southward. Um and I don't know if it was the the people in the village or whatever, but it was moved southward about three miles. And um uh the area, I guess, then was used for the military. Um and perhaps the residents just moved three miles away, but when you line the two maps up. It's moved uh basically three miles to the south. Uh between nineteen forty-four and nineteen fifty-four. Um so basically, what we found after finding Magua, uh it had. The other areas that we have found um sites at had been basically um. Since the land had got moved around uh and um. In the fifties and all when they were building the bases and all. Pardon me?
No, I didn't say anything. Please continue.
But basically, what happened was was that soil got moved and as it rained, you know, uh. Soil moves and and especially if it's exposed and you don't have any jungle there. Then you'll have runoff and um and erosion and some of these other sites got covered. And that's why they didn't. And that's why they didn't find them, because they were doing basically walkovers on the land and not doing the shovel testing, the systematic shovel testing that we do.
All right. Okay, and about Puwa Point, can you describe for those who are watching, just very briefly?
Did I answer your question?
About Puwa Point, yeah.
All right.
Josh, can you point to Puwa Point? Am I correct that Puwa Point is also one of the places? I mean, it's also a historic cultural site that's eligible? I think it's supposed to be registered.
I'm sorry, Senator, you're breaking up.
Okay.
I can mention that, yes, Puwa Point has many different sites.
Many different what?
Right, we have sites that are eligible up and down Puwa Point. We would have liked to have made it a district. I don't think the military wanted a district at the time, or it may have come back from the keeper that they didn't consider it a district because they were too spread apart. And it may have been just the way that it was written. Other than that, we have numerous sites all up and down the coast there from Haputo and especially Puwa Point that are, have, like I said, numerous sites throughout that area there.
All right, thank you. That's really what I wanted to show for those who are watching, that the sites we're talking about are just up the cliff from still preserved, you know, ancient village of Haputo, Puwa Point, and other cultural sites. And so I just wanted that to be part of this discussion. Okay, thank you, staff, for the map. Thank you all. And we'll move on. So we talked about the firing range area now and preservation up there. Did my colleagues have any questions regarding that or anything we've talked about before we move on to the programmatic agreement for the 2020 MIT? Senator Kelly Marsh-Preston?
Sajid Masri, Madam Chair. Well, it's really more of a comment. I'll see if one of them turns into kind of a question. But, you know, we were just talking about the orchid conservation area at the new marine base. And I just want to remind people that part of the reason why we have such strong oversight in development like this is because what we are talking about now, Kailalo, was a successful, succeeding, thriving conservation site that was mitigation for a previous project. So if we can keep in mind in future PAs, if there's any way to guarantee that when we put our time and investment and trust in a conservation site, where in my estimation, from the fence that was removed and other things, millions of tax dollars were lost in the tearing down of this conservation site and decades-old trees of endangered species were gathered as seeds in the hopes of being replanted, that we figure out a way in these PAs to guarantee, if we're going to invest time and trust in a conservation area as mitigation for real loss, then there's some sort of guarantee that a few years later, it isn't just convenient to bulldoze it, set the conservation clock back, and mean that much more loss for our community. So, yeah, I wanted to remind people that this was a conservation area. A lot of endangered species had to be either killed or removed and lost to move them to somewhere else for this site. And to remember that when we think of that orchid conservation area. Is there any part of this or the previous site? You know, I've been reading more about vernacular landscapes and the whole cultural landscape concept is really important because we're capturing a lifestyle, we're capturing a life way. And so are there elements? Is this anything that the shippo has done? Or maybe it's something we need to add in as considerations? That there are elements of vernacular landscape? That it's not just Haleki and Atossa here as a memorial marker? But, you know, if there's an ancestral bamboo grove, if there's an ancestral certain type of site, do we have any of that being conserved even in these developed areas?
Senator, you were breaking up there a little bit. Yes, we're looking, especially now, we're looking at landscapes totally different because we've gone from a temporary habitation area to more of a permanent thing. We're finding stuff all over the island here that we haven't seen before. We're finding it in early pre-ladi down in Agit now. So we've got it down in Tocha. It seems like we're finally starting to blossom, finding out about the cultural aspects of Guam. And so we've been riding along on a kind of a train here and now we've got a new track in a new direction to look at. So basically, yeah, we'll be looking at cultural landscapes, vernacular landscapes, and all, and trying to put those in their preservation plans and focus more on those. Of course, now, when we do that, basically, that's going to perhaps maybe stifle some development here and there, but at least it will preserve that for the generations to come. And that's what we're really here for, support. It's not for me, and if I had kids, it wouldn't be for my kids, but it'd be for my kids' kids or your kids' kids going down the line.
Okay, so Sajid Masri?
For generations to come, we hope to preserve them.
Absolutely. That's the kind of record that needs to be preserved, is one that captures ancestral lifeways and historic, you know, other events or peoples or objects or what have you, but to keep that part alive and it represented for generations. So I think I have heard, though, that there are parts of maybe either site where that vernacular landscape includes some of the vegetation, like I was saying, you know, an example of like bamboo or fading or something like that. Have you seen that as part of the plan?
I don't really have it as part of the plan, but I have seen that here on Guam. I've seen the ginger follow the, basically, follow the drip line from the roof of a ladi house. And so it's still a thousand years later in that drip line growing. It's a beautiful thing when you can see that and document it and all that. That's why we have to get the archaeologists and cultural anthropologists into looking at these days, to seeing that, to seeing the patches of Puwa that grow up, that people used in the 40s, in the 30s, 1800s even. And we still find those today. And they're beautiful square patches and they seem to grow that way today. We see these type of plants and these type of landscapes, and we just have to make sure that the archaeologist is not only looking at what's on the ground and what is below the surface, but they're looking up and around. Because many times you'll see it visually on top of the ground before you see it, put your shovel in the ground to recognize it below the ground there. So many times, we're finding areas now with ornamental house plants from the 30s, 40s, 50s, or whatever, that are not being recognized. And so as soon as we start seeing those, you can automatically say, okay, there's a possible house here. These plants really don't move very far unless you pick them up and plant them. So we're starting to look at those and find different houses and stuff like that in the areas. And of course, like I said, agricultural aspects also.
Yeah, so Senator Marsh, this is Patrick. So, you know, you bring up a good point, and that's something that we can incorporate on future research designs because we're just totally focused on archaeology, right? And now that we are expanding our perspective of it, of not just on the target of the project, but looking outside of that certain project, encompassing also the agricultural aspect on our culture, that's important too. So that's something that we can start incorporating in the future, you know, along with what we need to start doing in this office also, is the historic architecture. Architecture is going to be one of our next aspects to start looking at, you know, and the beginnings of buildings on Guam. That is one of our missions as well, that we have yet to really hone our skills into that. So again, that's one of also my long-term missions and goals for this office.
It's good to hear of those expansions, those developments. And you're absolutely right, being able to identify it so that you know what you're documenting, but also in making choices about what to protect and so forth. And so if I can encourage those parts of the landscape as organic, because part of it is vegetation, as we've been talking about, as you know, organic or vegetative memorials and with signage as well. I know that there's like a bamboo grove down there at Haputo, for example. So, yeah, if you can include that because it will provide something more holistic and better represent that story and that life way. So Sajid Masri, Madam Chair, for letting me comment on that.
No, thank you. Senator Harris? Yeah, nothing?
So are we talking about the La Texa now?
Yes, before we move on to the programmatic agreement for the MIT. Yes, any other questions regarding the Texan area or the other area?
Yeah, so in looking at stipulation 13, what was the, what is the status of that? As far as, you know, what were the demands that were made under stipulation 13? And what's the status of that?
Yeah, so the main focus there was the drive for a complete resurvey, you know? And so we've had a couple of meetings with them and John Mark was able to sit with their archaeologists. Basically, they've agreed to everything we've asked for. And then diving deep into the methodologies of what is our ask, John Mark and their archaeologists went back and forth. And at the end of the day, they've agreed to everything that we've asked. So right now, that document is going to the system that's being reviewed by their JRM on their side. And then we're just awaiting their feedback on that.
So can you share with us?
But it's been very, it's been good discussions. It's been good discussions. And John Mark, if you want to just kind of describe on the surface the difference of prior methodologies compared to what we're experiencing?
Right. And basically, one of the things that we're implementing here is systematic shovel testing at a rate of volume that we believe will help us identify sites. And the fact that a 30-centimeter round shovel test is a lot less volume than a 50-centimeter round, but we would like to go to a 50-centimeter square to get more volume out of that. Because when you're digging the hole, you're trying to get as much information out of that shovel test as possible to let you know what's there. And if I miss it by an inch, then I missed it. It doesn't make any good. So we try to get as much as we can out of there and still keep in the realms of practical stuff. And basically, I'm on the council of councils with the other state archaeologists, and we've discussed this methodology and what is the best way and the most, I guess, systematic way to locate and find sites. Now, if this was done prior to the Main Contonment or prior to the other stuff on the other ranges, we would not run into this problem. So the aspect being that if we change the methodology, we'll get better results and hopefully come up with some more sites and all that. We know that one of the sites that was mentioned on the road was the road to Machinal was about the Machinal Village. And yet, no one has ever, it's not on the map. But we're looking for it.
Okay. So is this improved survey, is that taking place on the known rifle range? In addition, or where is that taking place, the survey?
It's going to be on the 735, their large rifle range. It's west, northwest of the first four that's already been cleared.
So the fifth fine range, is that correct?
Correct.
The largest, the one that's double the size of all the other firing ranges combined, the multi-purpose machine gun range. And it's the one with the endangered tree. Sorry, no, sorry.
Yeah, so we're just waiting some feedback from JRM on this. But, you know, as far as giving you some updates, so far, they've been in compliance and need to conduct our request.
So knowing what we know about Magua, should we find bone fragments? Does that halt the project? Is that going to, are we going to preserve in place? Either Patrick or, you know, the state archaeologist?
Sorry, you were bringing, can you repeat the question?
Sure. So if we find bone fragments, does that halt the project? You know, considering that what we learned with Magua, you don't want a repeat of Magua.
As we know, right, as we know, we put in the objections to, since I've been here, I've been putting in objections. But we put in the objections to the survey that was done there. Basically, this area had been bulldozed prior to, in the 50s, just as the other ranges have, just as Magua had. And of course, Magua was in a little bit better shape than these areas. And this runs halfway into Karst area. So I don't think that, this is not like Hawaii where people were building on lava. But here, we have a certain area that needs to be tested. And so we're not sure right now. It is a little bit more, how would you say, it's a little bit closer, seems like less soil development on this area. But I don't want to speak mainly because we haven't done the survey yet and we still have, like I said, And we still have, like I said, the Machinal village hasn't been found. Hopefully, if we don't find it, maybe at sometime during the course of the work in the future and all that, they can actually do a survey and perhaps find that village.
So again, the question, I guess the question is, will you, you know, will you, you know, halt the project if there are bone fragments found?
If they find a bone fragment, we're probably going to keep with the standard aspect of taking a twenty-five-meter radius and then going from there and looking at each aspect of that and doing one-by-one excavations there.
So pretty much, we will follow the SOPs that we have in place for any type of findings like that. No different from any other location. So there's SOPs to be carried out once types of findings like that are found.
So I remember in the annual workshop, you'd mentioned that you were thinking about stipulation, I think it was stipulation fourteen, which is amending the programmatic agreement. This programmatic agreement was created in 2011 prior to the identification of the Texan as, I'm sorry, Tai Lalo as the site for the firing ranges. Are you, are you still, you know, considering, you know, what's at stake here? You know, this is, and with the knowledge that we have today that the cultural landscape is pretty, is integral to the archaeological sites. Are you working towards amending the PA so that this area can remain untouched? Because we know that surveys can cause some impact to this area, whether there is archaeological finds. It's still, you know, the forest itself is impacted. Are you, are you going to amend the PA? To update it to what we know in regards to Magua, in regards to, you know, the importance of cultural landscapes?
Yeah, so based off of what we've known so far with the Guamanian territory buildup, we feel that we had some options. Step thirteen and step fourteen were two options. But in the case of the largest firing range, we felt that step thirteen would be the best posture to take at that time, just to make sure that, you know, dealing with the survey. Step fourteen is still on the table. We're still analyzing the probabilities of amendment, but coming up with some hard justifications to present if and when that is invoked. So it's not off, but while we go through the process of step thirteen, right now, we're waiting for that to come into fruition and then see if we're still required to do fourteen. But definitely not off the table right now, but we're proceeding with the thirteen first.
Yeah, to me, it makes sense to do both at the same time, I mean, considering the evidence is there. So yeah, something I would definitely advocate for and perhaps working with your office in that. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Taitikwe?
I have no questions. A lot of them were answered by the other senators, so I greatly appreciate it. Looking forward to listening to the next segment. Thank you.
All right, so just to recap, so as we continue, we're moving forward under the same programmatic agreement, which intended that historic cultural sites would be avoided unless not possible. And so the determination of not possible is what we've been disputing, you know, for years regarding Magua and other sites. And of course, there's been disputes as to really, you know, how culturally significant were these sites? And we're finding now that what, you know, that we should not accept anybody else's interpretation of these sites. And that, and I think what Senator Paris has brought up today is very important. We knew before they started to construct the firing ranges that this Tai Lalo site cannot be separated from the Latexan village or villages. It's a, it's a, it's one of the remaining well-preserved villages, ancient villages. And they've documented, you know, different changes over the years, including how the areas, you know, above the cliff lines may have been used. And so I think that's also worth considering, not just that we're going to study and if we find something that we preserve, we try to preserve in place according to the existing PA's, but that we reexamine perhaps right now the significance of the cultural landscape now that we've learned much more from Magua and we do not want to repeat that. And that we've always, you know, said from the start, these are connected to the Texan area. So we could just consider that one more time. All right, we're going to move on now to the programmatic agreement. This is for the Mariana Islands Testing and Training Range that has been established in our oceans that include all the Mariana Islands. And they pretty much go all the way to the edge of the Hawaii Training and Testing Area. And so they encompass huge parts of the ocean and the land, Guam, the harbors and, or Upper Harbor and other areas of Guam. And so this was originally subject to a programmatic agreement that was entered into in 2009 called the MIRC, M-I-R-C, the Mariana Island Range Complex. That morphed into the MIT, which was a bigger range area, training area, included more training, included sonar, included detonations in the water. And now that was set to expire in September 2020. And so we were in the process, Guam was in the process of negotiating another programmatic agreement to cover the training and testing that the military has decided to continue with for another, I think at least five years, is that correct, Patrick? Five years? And so, so a programmatic agreement allows the military to follow this one agreement for all of its activities described in this Training and Testing Project, which goes on for five years. As opposed to, for every single occasion, consulting under section 106, the Historic Preservation, the National Historic Preservation Law, they would have had to consult for every occasion of training or testing with the State Historic Preservation Officer, discuss which properties would be affected, and then, you know, make a determination how they were going to avoid those properties or not avoid those properties and what mitigation would be effective. So pretty much entering into a programmatic agreement makes it more convenient for them in a lot of ways because they don't have to continue to consult on a very regular basis and that they follow the same procedures for the whole project, which they include every training. So we have a couple of questions, Patrick. Well, if you could just give us your status on these discussions, the deadline has passed. Are you still, are you still in discussions with them? Are we still negotiating a new programmatic agreement?
Yes, yes. So the overview on this is, you know, there's been an older one that was ten years from 2009, that was to expire last December. And it encompasses all of their recurring trainings and exercises, all the ones that, you know, when they go out to their firing range down in Arori Point to Valley and Shield to Cult North. Those are probably the bigger ones with multinational involvement. And so with that, basically, the purpose of the PA is that there's an understanding between DOD and the Shippensburg Office that establishes the agreement of all these recurring trainings that has, that is operated around historic sites. So instead of every endeavor coming in for a 106 review, we take a look at the entirety of all the established maps and the confines of the trainings that it has to stay within it. So there's a lot of pre-planning that goes into it, you know, and a lot of information that they have to provide for us or to us that we are comfortable enough that says, okay, here's the maps. You cannot train around this area, or you can probably train a little bit around this area. And so we break down, it's a lot of work going into it as far as establishing the guidelines. And then, in lieu of the piecemeals of the 106 reviews, that this covers all of that. With the notion of them coming back and reporting to us what was the impact of their trainings. So we gave an initial extension of six months late last year to June with the intent of, with expectations of finishing it off. They changed course, they being JRM, changed course as far as the negotiators, they're from the Hawaii folks to the local folks, the JRM folks here. Another extension was granted to September 30th due to COVID. At that time, I did say that I would not provide another extension with the intent of continuing the dialogue and the negotiations of a new PA, only because, once again, that it's so large and encompassing that having a well-established PA is beneficial to my office as well. Towards the end of September, again, negotiating and meeting with them, their desire to continue with the negotiations and good faith effort, I put together some mitigation plan, some mitigation items that they were open to of providing us, that is, I believe is probably above and beyond a normal ask in a PA like this. And in order for us to continue to work towards a well-established PA, I've already, I've gone ahead and granted an extension to December 30, which I intend to finish prior to December 30. Now, this is, this is something that would be done with any entity. In fact, we're working on an agreement with the Chabaki Towers as far as their historic interpretations and all of that stuff that's going on over there, that's not in the headlines. But those, you know, we came up with an agreement of establishing everything within forty-five days. And because they're making good faith effort and there's things beyond their control to complete, I've also provided them with extensions on stuff like that and agreements like that. So as long as I see that there's good faith effort and there's movement, you know, and in this case, them working with me as far as the mitigating efforts, in particular, having the commitment to provide technical assistance to my office through a SOI-qualified archaeologist and knowing that we are moving forward to establish a pretty good PA for the island of Guam, then I went ahead and gave an extension to December 31st. So that's pretty much the overview and the catch-up to where we are right now. Right now, we have our legal representative from the AG's office working with their legal representative. A lot of the asks have been the same from over the last year of negotiations. And so we're just waiting for the latest draft. Now, once I feel comfortable and okay with that document, then they know that I want public comments to give, whether it's ten or fifteen days, that we'll put on our website, that the public can go in there and take a look at the write-up and provide public comments. So those are all in line with this current endeavor.
All right. Thank you for that update. You know, I've shared with you before that I have a couple of concerns regarding the extension, first of all. It was my understanding that, well, we found out in August that the Department of Defense has issued a Record of Decision, meaning they've decided, they did their environmental review process, and they've concluded that they will continue the project as described, that their decision is made. And they made this decision before we have concluded with our programmatic agreement. And I know from years ago that, you know, the NEPA, the section 106 consultation is supposed to occur before they finish their Record of Decision because it's supposed to be part of it, which is why, if you look at past programmatic agreement, that was, that was one of the, you know, big issues at the time, where they had to, in their Record of Decision, lay out that they would not be using pocket at the time or different things. And those were all part, it's worth trying to influence their decision and that we're trying to influence that if they make a decision that's going to affect cultural properties, that we are able to fully impact that. And I just wondered that by granting an extension, if we actually allow them to make that final decision without, you know, a new programmatic agreement. But my other concern is that, yeah, I'm grateful that the public will be involved. But if you've already made a deal with the Department of Defense and then you bring it to the people of Guam, it's very difficult to get input at that time. It's, you know, then we're, we, you, I don't know. I envisioned the input process to be to inform you. It's us, the people of Guam, trying to inform you of what, you know, we feel like is the best way to carry these properties. And that that you would take to your negotiations and incorporate, you know, as opposed to vice versa. And when you say that your council is in meetings with their council, yeah, you know, I'm trying to be optimistic, but I can't help but feel like it sounds like, you know, the deal is done and the opportunity for input is very limited at this point or it's going to make us, you know, pit one against the other. Wouldn't, I don't think that needs to occur. And what we really wanted to do this time with this programmatic agreement, I've said since the beginning, is to make the best one that we can. And we are only going to do that by, with collective knowledge, you know. I know, Patrick, you have experience. Our state archaeologist has a lot of years of experience in the office. But still, there are a lot of people in the community who also have experience and they are the ones who are living with the outcomes of these programmatic agreements. And so we've said so many times, we need Guam to get to the table. Well, this is one of the very rare occasions where Guam is at the table. And that, you know, I don't want it to be squandered on, you know, when we have an opportunity to settle some of the issues that have really impacted our community. And property is one of them. And Magua is, I think, the perfect example as to why, you know, we don't want to be told in the end, after being told over and over that we can't do anything about it, that it's not significant, that it wasn't a village, that it wasn't a place where people live, to find out, you know, later, that we have to change our perspective, that now we're finding barrels. I don't know. It's just, we all have to keep our minds open and our jobs, our capacities open for input. It's the most important thing that we are going to do, I think, because none of us knows everything, none of us. And we should not act that way. And we should not act that way. But um
Yeah.
But can you just, uh, what is your understanding of the section one oh six process when it comes to public input? Because it does require
Uh, just
Be consulted, yes.
Yeah, thank you for, for those comments. Um, again, you know, this, this uh negotiation has gone on for about a year and a half, almost two years. And uh so a lot of uh public in, or public input or pu- input from, from stakeholders, I would say. Uh, from yourself and, and um the other senators and, and other stakeholders have been already provided. Um, so you're gonna see a lot of those themes in the draft. Um, is a deal done? Absolutely not. And, and I, I give my commitment to the people of Guam that it's not done. Um, and hence why I, but I would, be, before I provide it to the public, I'd like to be comfortable with it myself. Uh, because I'm, I'm the one that's gonna be operating and executing this P A. So before I, 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 I send it out to the public for review, I'd like to be comfortable. So if I get any questions from the public, I'd like to justify the, the draft. Um, also, when you talked about the um, the, the lawyers talking about it, actually, I want to thank you because I think it was one of your initiatives and your push to get legal representative in this uh representation in this negotiation with the Navy. So, you know, that wasn't done in the, the, the two thousand nine P A, I don't believe. And so having that, that lea- that legal eyes that we have with the Attorney General's Office, uh, and I believe you were, you were the major champion on that. Uh, so that one, um, I'm, I'm greatly appreciated that, that we have that. So that even solidifies the, the legality of this document. Now, with your question right now, as far as the um, public review for, for section one oh six, really, the office, the shipo, is viewed as the public's represent- representation, the governor's representation to any of this stuff. So it doesn't call for, for public um, uh comment or public uh review for all the section one oh sixes. If we were to do that, um, really, nothing would get done. It, 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 it really has to be uh within the, the trust and the confidence in the ship's office to, to review these one oh six reviews um and, and make the best decision uh when it comes to cultural resources and, and historic sites. And again, a section one oh six, it, it encompasses anything that's federally funded. So even if Gura were to change light bulbs, they have to put a section one oh six request into us. That's, that's just the, the nature of the, of the federal law. Um, so yeah, that, that um goes a long way and in avoiding that. So in, in this case, going through a P A and, and actually having a public comment um is actually more beneficial uh in this regard than it going through a, a regular section one oh six process.
All right. Well, my understanding of the section one oh six process is that uh the shipo is supposed to facilitate consultation. And uh the consultation is not only with the shipo, but it's, it's facilitated. For example, I know we're not described in the historic preservation law as a Native American uh, you know, tribe or uh native Alaskan or the native Hawaiians there. They are specifically consulted. Their shipo must consult with these because they, it is their culture that is being impacted. And that is, that is what's important to me here, is that even though they might not write specifically Chamoros into their federal law, that we here on Guam can consult Chamoral people as to how their cultural sites are going to be uh, you know, impacted. And, and so that's my concern. And it, you know, it does say uh participants in the section one oh six process, the public nature of involvement, the views of the public are essential to informed federal decision-making in the section one oh six process. The agency official shall seek and consider the views of the public in a manner that reflects the nature and complexity of the undertaking and its effect on historic properties, the likely interest of the public in the effects on historic properties, confidentiality concerns of private individuals and businesses, and the relationship of the federal involvement to the undertaking. And I just, you know, I, yeah, so I'm, I, again, I appreciate that you're going to have public input on this, so uh I'm, I'm going to support that. And I do support legal involvement, not, but not to the, to the exclusion of our shipo who we are hoping will represent our views, yes, uh. Yeah, all the way. Yeah, so I have a couple of questions if I could, uh, continue. Um, have they given you a full description of the undertaking?
Have they given us a full description of the undertaking?
Yeah, well, so the requirements of the one section one oh six consultation, they're supposed to give you a description of the undertaking, which is uh what they describe in their, you know, um Mariana Island Training Testing Document uh as to be the proposed activity, right? And they're also supposed to um, this inform you of historic properties within the area of potential effects. And I know we've had many discussions on this. Have you been informed of the historic properties within the area of potential effects? Are we still waiting for information in that regard? Are you satisfied? Or do we need to do more surveys? That type of thing. And thirdly, what are the potential effects of the undertaking on the historic property? So do we have that information ready, I guess, is that's
Yeah, we, we are, we are um, we are slowly gathering information. And are we satisfied? At this point, the answer is no. Uh, John Mark is working with their cultural resource manager at, at J R M uh to analyzing all of the, the maps uh that will be affected as far as the, the ground disturbance. Um, in this regard, you know, foot traffic, boots on the ground, vehicles, and, and then having the A P E area potential effect on, on the closest um uh cultural sites. That's where we, we would deter- determine, um, you know, the no, the training, no training zones and, and working through that. So we're, we're not there yet. Um, I know, you know, like I said, John Mark is, is, is working that and, and up to today, he was still reviewing and identifying, looking at our mapping system with cultural resources and, and cross-referencing it to what they've uh provided to us. Um, again, you know, we're, we're, we're working towards, go ahead.
No, I just want to say that, that's the type of information that, you know, it's basic to, to this negotiation, right? And it, and it's a lesson that we have learned from the past agreement is that despite whatever it might have called for in that past agreement, we do not have that information right now. We don't know where the training took place or what the effects on historical properties might have been. This is the type of things that we've been discussing for the last two years, is that that knowledge is we don't have it despite the P A. We don't want to enter another P A where, you know, it, that should be the basic premise that uh we know what the impacts will be. And now we make an agreement as to how we're going to uh move forward, knowing, knowing all of that. Um, okay, what about, uh, how long do you think before we get all the rest of the information that you, you've asked for, the basic information?
Uh, uh, if I may, Senator, I'm a Chautauqua State Archaeologist. Uh, we're working on that to make sure um, uh, to find out, to make sure the studies are done, uh, what we call baseline studies. Um, uh, where we'll know exactly what is there, because we did not get that information uh from the previous P A. Um, and so right now, we're working hard to um with them to get that, make sure those areas are done and studied. Um, as, as we learn more about Guam now, things change, so we have to look at it again. And so it's just like a, a doctor and a person, we, we, we we have to keep examining everybody as they get old, because we got new things that we find out. So in uh doing that, one of the things, um, uh, like Senator Marsh mentioned, uh, we're gonna be looking at the vernacular landscape of those. We don't want guys, we don't want troops uh even if they're walking through the forest to be trampling on those vernacular landscapes and, and all. So we want to avoid those, make sure we're avoiding them. And um, as we learn more, things are gonna be changing over time. Um, it will be a living document um that, that will have to change as we find out more and more about Guam and um uh make sure, because we'll, we'll never stop learning. That's one thing about Guam. It's so much history here. We're never gonna stop learning about the ancient Chamoros and what they did. Um, and how they brought about life to this island.
Yeah, and, and going back to uh, you know, you mentioned something about uh, you know, one oh six uh compared to uh the P A. Um, you know, I've, I, I think I've mentioned in the past that, you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a proponent for the P A. Uh, but it has to be a, a well, uh, thought-out document um in order for it to execute, because, because number one, you, you get more things out of a, a P A through mitigation than you would during uh, during a, a normal section one oh six review. Um, in this case, you know, we're, we're gonna get the baseline studies that, that we've asked for, for these locations. Uh, we're, we're gonna get uh technical assistance, um, you know, in, in line with, with uh come into this agreement. And um, you know, those, that's, that's, you know, to me, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a partnership thing with our, with with, with the, the customers that we have, whether it's military or, or Gov Guam agencies uh or, or, or the private sector. Um, you know, I, I, I came into an agreement with G P A a couple of weeks ago. Um, you know, with their consent decree, um, you know, coming quickly. Uh, so, you know, they realized uh, you know, the, the strain that we have uh and, and the importance and the roles that we have. So they're, they're willing to, to step up and, and assist us with the, with a G I S expert uh that we lack. So, you know, trying to, to um, you know, strengthen the, the, the posture of, of our, our office here and is, is still, you know, execute our mission. Um, I think, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of, lot of work in the negotiations and the discussions for this P A, that's gonna be beneficial to the island, to our office as opposed to just a piecemeal section one oh six reviews. Um, you know, that, that, that takes up a lot of time as well. So, you know, if you, if you weigh out the, the difference, um, you know, the benefit it uh outweighs with, with the P A.
All right. Well, yeah, the, the, the goal is that, you know, shipo is a regulatory, um, you know, we're, we're, we're all relying on you. We put uh for Guam, you represent Guam. And uh so I just think the more you pu- bring the people of Guam along, the, the better it's going to be. Uh, for example, have they, um, yeah, all that information that we've requested in the past for the past uh training exercises, the impacts, if that can be made, you know, public, then we would know this is what happened in, of, over the past five, ten years. And um, you know, it would just help, I think, the people to understand what we're talking about, what, what the potential implications are going forward. I'm gonna put up a map very briefly, uh. If my staff could put that up. This just shows the area of the mitt that uh, that we're talking about right now. We could zoom in a little more. And if you can point to the island of Guam, Guam is a tiny dot there. Uh, and there's the Mariana Islands. And the red dotted line was the original marked area, I believe. The Mariana Islands Range Complex area was expanded to the green line. And that is now the Mariana Islands Training and Testing Area. This particular map, uh, well, up here in the right-hand corner, if you can, if you can blow that corner up, shows that it is, uh, there's a corridor between Guam's and Hawaii's training ranges. But anyways, this is the area. So it encompasses the, the archipelago and more, much, much, much more. Okay, thank you. It's this mitt, it's this mitt, um this training and testing area under the mitt that uh where sonar use is uh allowed, where um detonation also occurs as part of the training. And I believe, if I'm not uh incorrect, Mr. Wuhan, that the recent um sinking of the ship uh by live fire was part of training activity uh conducted pursuant to the mitt. But one of the questions that I've asked you is um, we hear, we, we get notices almost weekly now about uh training going on uh over uh the old Nimitz um golf course uh in um Malolo all, all over Guam. We hear about these trainings and, and then, of course, we have the big trainings that occur. And I want to know if you could clarify for us, which of these trainings are not covered in the mitt? And which of these you've had to use a, an individual section one oh six process to, to approve or to allow?
Yeah, I, I don't know the list or have the list in front of me, Senator, but if, if the training or the exercise is not in the P A, they have to go through a section one oh six review. So it, it's spelled out in the, in the, in the P A, which trainings are, 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 uh, that falls under that. And if it doesn't fall under the P A, then they, they must go through a section one oh six review. So there's no exemption to any type of uh milit- uh training or exercises that's gonna fall to the cracks.
Well, when I had asked your office before, I couldn't get a clear list of which ones are being approved outside of the P A. And I also asked this of the admiral. And uh, he said he would give me a list, but my understanding is that they are still trying to clarify that list. And, and do you have an example of a recent activity that was not covered under that mitt's P A?
Have we had a one oh six, what's in the P A?
Uh, I believe we had a um, the exercise perhaps uh up at uh Anderson Airport Base uh, uh, back uh six months ago or a year. Um, but um, other than that, I, I can't recall right off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay, I, I know one, I know one. I think that, that one exercise, remember, it was all over Instagram and, and social media about all the the, the troops falling out of the, out of the plane up, up at Anderson. That one had to go through one oh six. So that, that wasn't um part of the, the old P A. So that, that's an example.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's a good example. All right. So I just wanted to make the point also that then we can kind of guess that all the other activity, all of it, is uh covered under the mitt. And so that's the importance of this agreement. It's like we get no other saying in it. You get no other yes or no, can you do this? No, it's uh all pretty much uh, you know, um, a go after this agreement is entered into. And right now, under the extension. All right, um.
If I may, um, you, you, we, we, we have the mitt, which is the training. And then, of course, the Navy has their own separate training, the Air Force has their own separate training. The Marine Corps will have their own separate training, which will be different from the mitt. They have training that they do and, and, and on a uh, um, regular basis um throughout uh the island.
And do they consult with you on that?
Well, on, yes, on those, we get consulted on. Uh, some of them may fall underneath the uh two thousand eight programmatic agreement, which we'll be looking into, diving back into that um here uh in the near future.
And so that's the programmatic agreement that we talked about regarding the contolment area, the construction, that, right? Same?
No, no, the, the, that was the contolment area and all that is the two thousand eleven
Okay.
Programmatic agreement.
Okay, so, so there may be others. So, but, but for, for the most part, most of the training that we're seeing is, is conducted pursuant to programmatic agreements that are either in existence or this, this mitt one that's been extended and will be renewed or renegotiated. Okay, um, Senators, uh, I'll open it for you, please. Uh, Senator Paris?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just uh wanted to follow up that question um regarding a list of trainings and programmatic agreements. Um, if we can get a comprehensive list of what P As match with what trainings and what projects, um, we really need to, I think, get on top of that. I mean, considering I think that was gonna be provided after the um after the, the after the, the annual workshop ended, but I've, I've never received it. So, um, I think that's really a priority, we need to get a handle on that one. Um, in regards to the, the extension of the programmatic agreement, so what, what is being extended? Is it the Merck PA from twenty, 2009? Is that what's being extended?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
Uh, Senator, with, with a request, I know, like I, like I mentioned earlier, uh, they, they changed, uh, course as far as, uh, who's doing the negotiations. Um, uh, so I would put that request, I know you probably put it in during the last, uh, consultation. Uh, probably you should put it into JRM for that list again.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, so going back to the, the current, um, PA that's in, uh, being, uh, used currently. So there is no interim PA, it's strictly the Merck PA that's being utilized right now, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, same, same, uh, uh, footprint that, that we're running off of.
So when you look at the map, the mitt is much larger. So is any trainings happening there currently?
It, it shouldn't. And, and if they do, like I said, it, you know, that's a separate, uh, 106 review. So, um, until, until we approve anything that's new, that's, um, uh, added on from the last PA, then it, the, the, the existing parameters that we're working off of should not cover those.
Okay, and so what kind of assurances are there to, um, you know, as far as communications go? Um, is there a constant communication about, uh, the trainings, uh, the times of trainings and locations to kind of, uh, verify that, um, you know, the projects are still within that footprint, the Merck footprint?
Yeah, so, so, um, um, in this case, I know, uh, you know, the old, the older PA, um, needed a lot of, uh, enhancement, right? Um, i.e., uh, the reporting mechanisms that weren't necessarily in place, uh, that we're, we're, we're making sure that it'll be in place with a new one. Um, so when, when, um, uh, training or exercises to take place, they're supposed to give like before and after photos to, to just view any type of impact on the area. And then that'll also be a part of a mandatory annual report, uh, that they'll be submitting to us. And so, you know, where a lot of those, those steps to, to, uh, assure that things are being done the way they're supposed to be weren't necessarily a part of the old PA that we're, we're really trying to strengthen in this one.
Thank you, that's, that's good to hear. Um, so some of the things, um, you know, if I can compare it to what's, uh, happening with Endangered Species Act, I mean, there's some parallels that can be drawn with the Endangered Species Act, Species Act with the National Historic Preservation Act. And, um, there's one procedure in the Dangerous Species Act where if conditions change, so like John Mark Joseph was saying, this is a living document, right? And so if findings are, you know, we've, we have findings that really kind of, um, require some sort of reevaluation of the plan, uh, there is a process in the Dangerous Species Act, which is called reinitiation. I think with this particular, uh, programmatic agreement, perhaps it's a, you know, there, I think that could be strengthened because when you look at the 2011 PA, I mean, there is a process where you can, um, you have differences and you resolve differences. Um, but if there's, you know, I think the, the recommendation, is there, first of all, is there a way to strengthen that procedure? So, uh, for instance, uh, we can prevent any harms to our cultural resources similar to, you know, with the Endangered Species Act. I mean, there is a, you know, opportunity to reevaluate whether jeopardy, if, whether an action is gonna jeopardize the continued existence of a species. Um, you know, same, same too with the National Historic Preservation Process. I, is there something, a way that we can strengthen that? So let's say preservation in place, can we, can we include something like that in this programmatic agreement? That's being, um, negotiated.
Yes, absolutely, uh, and I, I think there's some, some, uh, initial language, um, that states that in, in, in a current document that's being, being worked on. Um, but I, I would be interested to see what you have also, if you would like to share with me, uh, that provision within the, the Endangered Species Act and, and see how that correlates. So, um, that, that's a good find, it sounds like, and, and I, and I, I'm willing to take a look at that.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, some of the things too is how, there are procedures that I think require a little bit of more transparency. So, um, you know, when projects take place, you know, perhaps, uh, I guess let me give a, a parallel because I'm more familiar with the National Environmental Protection Act. There's things called notice, um, finding of no significance, right? And so when you, that, that, uh, basically, uh, things, uh, actions can take place without triggering any kind of, um, public oversight. Um, but I'm thinking if you got a series of those, it can add up to something significant, uh, a significant change. Um, is there any way that we can incorporate that to address, say cumulative effects? Um, you know, how can we strengthen this, this document to address these cumulative effects that may seem initially, uh, not significant when you're, when you're looking at the, the little actions? But when you add up all the little actions, it becomes, um, significant.
Good, another good point, um, you know, again, if, if you have something that, that is already established, I, I'd love to take a look at that and see if we can implement it and if it makes sense to, to have it part of this. Uh, because, you know, really there, there is potential for that. So, um, you know, definitely would like to see what you have with that.
Okay, definitely, I'll share that information with you. Um, the other thing is, uh, cultural traditional properties. So, um, you know, the issue of, um, you know, the, the overlap between natural resource being a cultural property, uh, uh, and the, under purview of cultural traditional properties. And what I'm thinking of that comes to mind, um, you know, is the relationship to, uh, perhaps whales and other, um, things we have in nature. Um, you know, how is that going to be addressed with this, um, programmatic agreement that's being negotiated?
Yeah, it's not, um, when it comes to, to that, um, it's specifically to historic sites and cultural resources, both on land and, and underwater. So if it deals with any of the shipwrecks or, uh, anything that's been identified as cultural, uh, sites underwater, then that, that falls under the purview of this PA as well as, uh, on land. So, uh, really, we haven't, um, made that distinction or, or that connection with, um, you know, the other, the other concerns that you guys have had with, with, uh, with the, uh, whales and whatnot.
Uh, but also in regards to, um, the, uh, cultural contexts, right? So the landscape as part of the cultural context, um, and, you know, this idea of um, is that, how is that going to translate into, um, this document?
It all depends because, because when, when they propose, uh, their, their training and exercises, they're, it's, it's almost, you know, it's literally in a box. They, 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 they present the parameters of where they're going to be playing, uh, their field of, you know, their, their field of exercise. And, and they are not to, to cross those borders. Um, so it's not a, it's not a, you know, they're, they're gonna go into a wide range or, but everything has to be approved, um, within the confines of their, of their play. Uh, and if, and if they, and they violate that, then that's a violation of the PA. Um, so, so we're looking not only within the, the, the box of, of the proposed play, but also outside of it, what's close to, to that area. And we, we make sure that we're, we're monitoring those. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas that it's just, there's no play area, right? So you can't even go there and play there because of this, this historic site and whatnot. So they, they adjust their training and exercises to areas that have almost no cultural sites or, yeah, I would say no cultural sites at all, but maybe bordering, uh, a site that, that they have to monitor. So that's, that's, that's pretty much the makeup of, of how the mapping goes and how we approve, um, these different types of trainings and exercises.
Well, thank you, Patrick, for the, the responses, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator March Titan.
Sijous Massey, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think we've been having a very good discussion. And in thinking through some of the issues that have been brought forward, you know, uh, it is a, a major concern of mine, and I'm so glad the Chair brought this up. I know it's been a concern of hers all along as well. And it's just, you know, having that loss of public input in many ways. And especially for Chamoros, I mean, this is their indigenous homeland, this is their ancestral heritage. Um, and so I'm constantly looking for ways that we might increase the types of public input. And so one of the things that I was thinking of is, you know, if we lose it per project in certain ways, um, we do, we do have possibilities. Um, we have some bodies like the Commission Ephenot Chamoros, we have the Historic Preservation Review Board. And maybe if we could, um, include them more often in giving that cultural perspective as well. But a, another thought that I had was, I mean, we have the annual PA and there are certain things that come from it, um, there is discussion. It does seem like when we get there, as we did this time, that we hadn't heard anything all year, a lot of things hadn't been followed up, a lot of decisions were made without talking to any of us, um, even though it had been our own request. So, uh, it, it has a lot of issues it needs to improve upon, I would say. But it does serve as a model that for the Historic Preservation Office, if they cannot do it per project, maybe they could have something like this annual check-in with the community. And there are a variety of ways to do it, um, to do it by, by category or by list of activities and just have a general session. Um, I, I think looking for ways like this to, to get some additional community input to what exists is important. And some of this discussion that's occurred, um, makes me really appreciate some of the new board members that are on the Historic Preservation Review Board. I think it's a, a very thoughtfully put together board where many disciplines are represented so that there's a breadth of community concerns that can be tapped into or can guide the office, although they only meet once a quarter for the Historic Preservation Office. So, um, I don't think they're, they guide the office in the same way that they do for the Preservation Trust. But they are there as potential. But, you know, we're talking about marine resources and vernacular landscapes, um, including vegetation. And so I think that there, with some of these new board members, there's that opportunity to have them talk about how, um, or weigh in with their expertise about how, if we're talking about a site, how that might connect to either the vegetation or especially for, for him, the, the marine resources. Um, because, especially when we're talking about traditional cultural properties and landscapes, those concepts are, are connected, um, very directly and, and as resources. Um, one of the other ones I wanted to touch on, I just wanna catch my own notes here. Um, yeah, I guess it, it mostly focused on that and the review board, um. Oh, the other was with the requests for the listing of the PAs and the activities. And again, this is something they should be doing rather than making it a two or three step process that they do it and then you have to try to compile a list. They should just be doing it, but to make it available on your website just so that anybody, anytime, we don't have to ask you, you don't have to find it, we don't have to wait till your office is open, to, to just have it available on the website, that the military, they have to compile it anyway, that they compile it in a way that makes sense for you and the community. And then to just make it available on the website. So those were basically the, the two points I wanted to make. And a lot of it is about that transparency and about actual communication back and forth. It's the goal, but it, it seems like, uh, there are a lot of ways where it's actually not occurring, like when we went to the annual PA and we found out that there was a lot they hadn't gotten to or they had done certain things without even telling us, and it was too late because it was now gone. So, um, if I could encourage those two areas, Sijous Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator, Senator Tyskul.
Sijous Massey, Madam Chair, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for sticking it out. I know it's been a couple hours, but I really appreciate it you being here. I think this is the last one, I'm usually very short, but. So, um, you mentioned, uh, that you're, uh, hey, can you tell me, Patrick, who exactly are you negotiating, um, PA with here on Guam?
So they have a, they have their own team with the Environmental Division. Uh, their primary negotiator, uh, is a civilian, a local gentleman by the name of John Solis. Um, so he's their primary negotiator. Uh, also on their, their, their team is, uh, Randy Sablon, who's a familiar, uh, name to us. Uh, he took over Roy Sutsui's position as, I believe, the civilian liaison, uh, to the Admiral. And also, uh, their CRM Sandy Lee is on their team and, uh, their, their legal counsel, uh, Harry Elliott. Uh, the one that's sitting on my table with me, uh, obviously myself as the primary negotiator, John Mark Joseph with the State Ar, the State Archaeologist. Uh, our legal is, uh, Jessica Toft from the, uh, Attorney General's Office. And also Carlotta Leongoro, um, and Vera Toposhner from, from, uh, the front office. That is always, you know, that I invite to, to sit, uh, to, to listen to. They are the military liaisons, uh, for the government. So that pretty much encompasses the, the, the brain trust, uh, on both sides. Um, you know, two, two very professional, um, groups that I think we have the same, you know, and it's, it's nice to, to see, uh, the locals that's hired by the military to be involved because they have a vested interest as this being their home as well. So it, it's actually, uh, you know, it's, it's actually a nice thing to, to, to sit down with, with, uh, you know, John and Randy, uh, to, to, to go over this because they, they care just as much as we do. They, you know, they're just being paid by, by those guys.
Great, I greatly appreciate that, and that's good to hear. That's, I'm really glad to hear that, Patrick, thank you so much for that. And the legal counsel, actually, you made, made a comment that in 2009, when the PA was first, they didn't have legal counsel, they actually did have a legal counsel because I was around during that time when they were going through it. And I believe Arthur Clark was their, uh, legal counselor overseeing the PA with the, the last ship. So, but it's a, that's what I was getting at, making sure that.
Yeah, that was a buildup PA, uh, not, not this, uh, exercise PA.
Actually, okay, and, and Jessica Toft, and I get to know someone from the Attorney General's Office, but it doesn't stop you from incorporating, uh, an additional attorney to, to these meetings, right? I mean, this, this meeting that you're having, uh, the two groups, great groups, by the way, um, can you incorporate another person onto that group? Or is it closed, close to everybody except those individuals?
Um, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we, we can talk offline on the, on the possibilities. Um, you know, I just, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm open to, to, to all, you know, suggestions and options.
Okay, that's, that's very good to hear. Um, you mentioned a while ago, you had at least seven different changes that are gonna be different from the last PA. And, um, i- is, has there been any update on to anything new other than those seven that you had mentioned in the media recently?
Um, the, the only, the one that's, that's pretty significant and, and is new is, is the, uh, their agreement to, to provide another SOI qualified, um, archaeologist. And the intent of that would be, um, uh, for the duration. be for the duration of the PA, whether it's five or 10 years. The last PA was for 10 years. And this is, this is me learning from the buildup PA, which, which, as big as it is, and the, the magnitude of the buildup, and, and we negotiated one archaeologist from one to three years. And it took them nine years to, to get that, that person in here. I, I, I think, I think we're old more than that. We, we, you know, we deserve more than that as far as, you know, the assistance that, that we need to offset the requirements that they need. And so in that aspect, you know, asking for a second one in order to, you know, for, for an extension was not far off of my realm. And fortunately, they, they've agreed to that. So, you know, again, building capacity within this office to, 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 you know, carry out our mission is important, and that's one of the ways we were going to do it.
Thank you, Patrick. You're absolutely right. I totally agree on that. And you kind of looted into my next question was, I know it's a 10-year agreement, and, and I too have down here to write to ask if maybe you can do a five years with the intention of renewing another five, as long as that everything stays, you know, as planned and, and provided for, because we don't want to wait till it's too late. You know, just like you mentioned earlier, when you were talking about the burial sites and how, you know, you guys were negotiating while they were still digging up. You know, I mean, if we can bypass any kinds of issues, I think, you know, if anything I ask that please, if you can, instead of 10 years, five years, with the extension of renewal, I'm, I'm hoping, Patrick, you know, asking if that, that could happen. The, the last question I have, Madam Chair, is with regards to CNMI, you know, the PA is like, it's collaborative PA between Guam and CNMI. Is that still the case? And, and who are you working on, on, on that side of the, the fence with CNMI? Are they, because you mentioned this group that you're talking to, the two groups, but I don't hear anything in the CNMI. And maybe I'm wrong, it's separate and apart, but I thought this agreement is one agreement that collaborated the two. Can you please explain?
Yes, the last, the last one was a, a combination with CNMI and Guam. This one, it's going to be separate. So they're doing two different negotiations for this PA, both with Guam and, and a separate negotiation with the CNMI. So they're going to have their own unique PA with the military.
Are you meeting, Patrick, with any of them, just to kind of get, you know, an idea what is CNMI doing? I mean, there are brothers and sisters next door that might provide information?
We, we really, we haven't, and, and maybe I should give them, give, give them a call. But, you know, the difference is, is that they're, they're confined within the bases here, where up there in Tinian and, and, and Saipan, you know, they're, they're in the civilian property. So there's, there's a huge difference when it comes to that. But as far as, you know, mitigation and asks and stuff like that, it, it wouldn't hurt to, to kind of, you know, share some thoughts with them. So, yeah, I'll, I'll jot that down. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and really appreciate what you guys are doing. Patrick, please, you know, we're banking on you, we're counting on you, you know, it's a, for the people of Guam. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to point out that Senator Marsh Titanow was very vocal in the very beginning of the MIT negotiations as to the separation with the CNMI that seemed to have been agreed to by the ship's office. But in the interest of time, I want to just go through a couple more questions regarding other pieces of property on Guam or other cultural sites, and just if we could just get your quick answers. And there probably won't be time for questions at the end of this, but if you could just update the public, starting with Pago Bay. Thank you for your letter. But if you, maybe you just announced, so Pago Bay, when they were doing the development, had discovered burials and had promised to, to rebury them in accordance with the ship's instructions. So we're going to get an update on that today.
Sure. Thank you. I, I did remember that even though I personally, I'm, I'm going back to Senator Ty Gries' comments about CNMI, that I may not have been talking to CNMI, but I know that Carlotta Longaro, the military liaison for the governor, has been talking to the CNMI regarding this PA. So there has been somebody on Guam that's been in close contact with CNMI regarding this topic. So I, that, I just, that just crossed my mind again. Onto the burials. If I, if, if I may, just go down a list that I have on what needs to be done. And, and this, this topic actually pains me as a ship, because we still have some human remains that's been in boxes for some hundred years, and, and we need to, we need to reinter them. I can go in detail. We have the Naftan Maninata Project. I think that's the big one.
Set that project for another hearing, if it's okay with you.
Sure.
Naftan Project.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it deserves a little bit more time, and that you, and, and we can discuss the plan. Yeah. So basically, I just want to know, because I wanted to hear about the Pago Bay, because we've been getting inquiries regarding interment of Pago Bay and the GWA projects, because those have been in the news as recent, you know, a little bit of controversy as to GWA having had human burials found in those sites also.
Okay, so we'll start with Pago Bay. And that one, actually, that's a longstanding project. As a matter of fact, I got one, their, the primary representative when it comes to this, Mr. John Sherman, I actually spoke to him this morning to get an update because according to, again, my subject matter expert in-house, Mr. Mr. Garrido, we're about 85% done as far as the construction of that monument. So speaking with Mr. Sherman this morning, he's actually ready to go, ready to meet with us to, to finalize and come to a conclusion with this project. So we're hoping probably, you know, as soon as December, that we can have a, you know, a ceremony over at Pago Bay with this project.
All right. Thank you. And the GWA project where human remains are found?
So GWA, I'm going to pass that over to John Mark Joseph. He's been very, very involved in that lately, taking a deep dive in that more than I have. So I'll go ahead and, and pass the mic over to him.
Yes, up at the Torre de la Wastewater Treatment Plan, we've, a survey was done. They didn't find anything. When they were actually doing the excavations, they hit human remains. We've collected one individual from that impact. As we were viewing the, one of the manholes where they were putting it in up there, we saw what looked like to be a feature that needed to be looked at. Turned out, the archaeologists that they hired said that is a burial feature. And we've done, worked with Miguel Fradaleo on getting some ground penetrating radar done up there for them. And we've come up with a couple different anomalies in the ground. So as the rain, it apparently washed away some of the dust from it, the last time we went up there, we seemed to see more burials that apparently got clipped, exposing the, the burial down into the coral. And so at this point in time, we did some more ground penetrating radar, came up with a little bit, some more anomalies. We're going to go back and do some more. And then after that, work with the US EPA, GWA, and reach out to the public. We've got to get a statement, reach out to the public. If they have any information on any burial site that was there during the 40s or 50s, that doesn't seem to appear on any maps, please contact us to where we can feed this information to them, and perhaps at that time, find out who these individuals were. And we still have to define if this is actually a larger graveyard that was not incorporated into the, you know, the Catholic cemeteries or the other religious cemeteries here on Guam. And it, it could have been a family cemetery that, that, you know, was there, and they were just burying them on the property and weren't telling anybody and inviting their, their local social group for that. I know laws were probably in place in the Spanish, it put some laws in that people had to be buried in the graveyard, and they didn't want, you know, they wanted everybody to come to the graveyard. Well, apparently, we might have, this is the first one, I believe, we that, that, that may be from a modern time, mid-century, that they weren't taken to the graveyard, but perhaps buried on the farm or on the fam, you know. So if anyone knows of any information, please give us a contact here at, at the State of Sword Preservation Office.
And we're still collecting some more information. You know, we're, we, we, we wanted to put out a, a press release on it, but there's still some, some questions that, that are not answered yet. So, so once we, we collect that and, and have a clearer picture that we can share with the public, we certainly intend to do that.
All right. And was the permitting, you, your office is part of the permitting process for all construction projects and clearing and grading projects? Was the permitting process compliant with sufficiently in this case?
The research design that was, that was done for that piece of property, they went in there, we, we had a known historical site across the street, and we had one right off the edge of the property from the 1940s, 1950s. We also had a ancient Tomorrow site there, near that, where the school was built. So they did a survey. We're now looking at that survey. Apparently, when they surveyed it, they, they missed this graveyard. That's why we're trying to, looking at tightening up the shovel test intervals to where we don't miss these type of sites again. It, it is really heartfelt when you have to go pick up someone from a, a, that's been dug up not properly.
All right. Appreciate that. I think we do have a few more minutes left, so I'd like to open to my colleagues if there's any other additional questions on any of these topics. I know we couldn't get to all the topics, but if there's anything else you want to conclude with, Senator Perez?
Nothing at this time. Thank you. I'm Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Marsh Titan.
Sajid Masri, you know, because of these inquiries that we get, we get people asking us or asking us to follow up on, with the, with these kind of internments, I, I know that there are other ones that, you know, they're still pending, how many years later? What is in place to make sure that there's the follow-through? I think that's some of what the concern is, is that if they don't ask us and we don't ask you, that some of these internments and situations like this will fall through the cracks. Are you current with the more recent projects? I know that there are older projects that still haven't done their reinternments. And what is there to make sure that it's not falling through the cracks?
Good question. And, and, you know, first and foremost, realizing what is, what is pending is, is number one. So I've had my staff develop a burial report to the best of their abilities, working with the archaeological firms on what type of bir, uh, human remains that are in their possession, working with the Guam Museum to establish the inventory there, and then coming up with what we know of, 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 of the different projects. So right off the bat, you know, we have federal highway projects that, that needs to be reintered. We have a private sector, one down at Akura Hotel, the Hagatna Bridge, another federal highway project that, that needs to be done. We have one, major one that GPA is actually, you know, being proactive at this time with us for, for reinterment down by, by the Melasot Church. So, you know, we, we are, that's, that's also our mission is, is to, to get these, these, these human remains back, back to where, where they were. And, and so, you know, we do have a list that we're working with the archaeological firms, as well as the federal agencies and local agencies, whoever has been responsible for these projects and these disturbances. So it, it's not easy. It's a work in progress, but, but I, I have put some, some effort, some staff time and effort into it to, to adequately do this. So, you know, are we, are we there where, you know, and is this totally accurate? That's why we're working on it, is, is to, to see if we can get as accurate as possible and get them reintered as possible as well. So we're, we're tracking it and, and, you know, we'll continue to, to get this done.
Glad to hear that, that some of that has been prioritized and that there has been movement in that direction. And, you know, I know you guys have limited staff right now, and, and you have such a large mandate. But if there is any way to make this available online as well, you know that these are the, maybe just list them all, and, and as they, as they come along, and then when they're completed, that that can be noted there. But I, my finding is, is that people really want to know where these sites are. I worked with university students, they went to visit them, or, you know, when I talked to other people. And so to hear that there's one at X Hotel or X Bridge, and to understand where it is, so that they could either pay respects or visit it, it ended up being really important to them. So if, if there are ways to provide that to them in a way that just makes it public, it doesn't have to be something that you have to answer to, request by request, that might be really helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. It's funny you say that, because that was a topic of discussion a couple of days ago with myself and John Mark, the exact same thing you said. So, you know, that's, that's a long-term project and, and a long-term vision that, that we, we want to accomplish for, for this office.
Senator, if I may, all right. Yeah, if I may, we've got a memorandum of agreement with the, with the federal highways whose money was funded by the DOD for the different bridges that were done, like Adelik Bridge and all that. So we're getting, we have those in, in line to have them, they're, they're looking at building a monument there at Adelik. That's why that you see that pullover place there, one here at Agonya. And, and of course, we just had individuals come back to Guam from the Benoff Island since 1973 when they were excavated. So we've, we've got those individuals coming back now, and we look to, look at the different entities to get them re-put back in the ground. I just got one from, I think he's been up since the 1960s. And, and so we're not sure, we know that the ones from 1973 are ancient Tomoros, the one from the 1960s, we're not, not actually sure if they're ethnic Tomoro or not, but we, we look to get a plan to get those worked in and identified.
Very good. And, and there is the possibility, I don't know if you've gotten an intern for a while and everything's online, and maybe interns are less likely, but, but even virtually, since its website, this might be something that an intern could help with, just the compiling and, and getting the listing of these online or something.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, just recently, we, we finally got our website back on, historicguam.net.
That's good to hear.
And so we're, we're doing Yeah. So we'll, we'll be putting a lot of this stuff on. We have We have also for, we'll have public comment coming up for the Naftan Maninata designing phase. It'll be in 3D. And so we'll have a public comment and put a press release out there fairly shortly with that big project. So a lot of things going on. And, you know, we just continue to, you know, strive on and move on and appreciate you guys' own care and support for what we do and the mission that we do.
Sorry?
Sorry. Speaking of interns, Patrick did allow us to bring on an intern from one of the high schools here that was helping us with their day-to-day activities. So as we can get those in here, they're much appreciated.
Excellent. We need to get more of our own community involved in these sorts of endeavors and to look at these kinds of careers. That's real important. So I'm glad to hear that. So thank you, both of you. Thanks, everybody who has been a part of making this a really meaningful hearing. And Sizus Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate all your questions and comments. Senator Titino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Patrick and Joseph, right?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you for having this roundtable and discussion and look forward to the next one coming up soon. I know that Patrick was mentioning December 30th, extending it, but he wants to do it before that time. So I'm looking forward to another roundtable and an update on what's going on and see what we can do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. I very much appreciate my colleagues. They've been champions of preservation of our culture. And I very much appreciate it. And we're all trying to support the Office of the State of Stork Preservation Office. It is very tragic. And you're right, Patrick, painful to hear the list of burials that still need to be addressed. And these have, these are decades long. So it's, you know, people might get upset, but we are aware of this. There have been some plans made and it's just a matter now of chipping away at the progress. So I'm very happy to hear that we are going to be hearing an update on the Naftan Maninata soon. And that we've got the updates that we received today regarding these. And I just, I can't stress enough that they're, the people of Guam, especially the Chamoros, who's, these are their ancestors we're talking about, they are, they want to know everything. If they could have access to everything, they would want that. And I always refer them to your office, but it's intimidating, you know, to try to request information from government agencies. And I just think you want to have the people of Guam behind you, yeah, share the information as much as possible. If I could ask just two more questions. One is, do you, are you, have you been able to set up like a hotline for those who see clearing or grading or excavation being done and suspect that, you know, your office should be involved? Because that's, we don't have enough personnel to go out there and inspect everything that's going on if they don't apply for a permit. So those are the ones that, if you see anything, please report it to the State of Stork Preservation Office. But is there some type of hotline or anything that you've been able to set up? I know we've talked about this before.
Yeah, we talked about this before. I actually put it on our website. There's a button there to report any vandalism or theft of cultural resources. It might need to be moved up because it's at the bottom. So I'll work on that. But no, we have not put a hotline per se, other than, I guess, because there's no direct line, a general line. Everyone has their own personal lines. So, you know, I don't know who I want them to call. But it is on our website to report any vandalism or theft of cultural resources.
All right, great. And I am so glad to hear your website's up. That is a huge resource. And that it was down for a long time was very difficult for my office. I know, so I imagine for everybody. So I'm glad to hear that. That is a huge.
Please, any comments, any comments that you have, all you senators, on that, please send it my way. Because like I said, we just launched it about a month ago. And so I know it's still, you know, a work in progress. So any comments would be appreciated.
All right, great. Thanks. And I know I asked you the last oversight here regarding Andy South, because I have been receiving calls that, you know, I think that's a settlement area and that they're not treating it as such or, you know, they're finding lati there. But you assured me at the time that that was not the case. So I just want to ask you one more time. Has there been any significant findings in this, the work that's being done in Andy South at this time?
Yes.
Yes, we have found what they believe may be one standing lati. And they're finding other things as they're doing, basically, that's under STIP 13, the first one. So as they're working in there, they've got monitors and everything. And they're getting back to us now with what they're finding. So we've asked them to keep away from certain areas and all that. And we're going to be monitoring that as they move forward with what they're doing very closely.
All right. Was that a known settlement site or not?
We believe that it was probably just like you would have Magua or whatever. As you get up on the plateau up above Pocket, you know, that's where Andy South is. So we believe that the people from Pocket and all moved were up on the plateau there too. So we're finding more and more sites that were not discovered before, the same as we did up the main contonment. If you look and stick the shovel in the ground, you will find sites. You know, so that.
Yeah, there's been, there's been some artifacts that's been found, but nothing of huge significance as of the Marine Contonment just yet. So, but definitely, you know, we stay on top of that and make sure we keep an eye on what's going on out there.
So the area where the lati was found is that, what's its fate?
Right now, I don't believe it's been moved or anything else. They're trying to protect it. They're still in the early phases of doing their clearing, their brush clearing and stuff like that and around the roads that they're doing. So they're taking it very slow, you know, one at a time. And it's, they're working, you know, Andy South, the main contonment, and at the other ranges. So they can't move so fast, but they have most of the archaeologists on an island kind of working hard.
Okay, so these are being treated similarly with the additional surveying and testing that you've asked them to do? Andy South as well?
Well, this is under the first stipulation 13. So, yeah, they're under the monitoring aspect of this.
Are they going? Okay. All right, okay.
I would have looked at additional, you know, resurvey of all the property that this one just happened to fall under the first initial objection. And so since they'd already signed the contracts before my objections went in, we could not, the best case scenario was the monitoring of that. We're still going to try to get it.
Are you saying that it's going to be cleared?
No, 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 no. Certain areas are going to be cleared. They have a certain APE area potential effect. And so right now, we're monitoring in those areas there. Or they are. And so they will be using that as part of their training. And we're keeping an eye on exactly what they're doing. So far, it's not like, it's not going to be like the main contonment where they've cleared the whole landscape and taken everything away from it. Here, they're only using certain areas and the road, the existing roadway that was there. Of course, they're expanding that roadway a little bit. But as they're clearing these areas, we have monitors in there on the ground looking at what is, what they're finding. You know, that's where they found the last stamp.
Let me just rephrase one more time. Are they going to be able to preserve any of these findings in place?
That's what we're working on now, yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm hoping that's the goal. Yeah, that despite which stipulation or which, you know, what we were operating under before, that that continued, that we are able to make that type of progress. Please keep us informed so that we can assist you in that regard. All right. And then for the public, I'd like to announce that the site for the historic preservation office is historicguam.net. And congratulations again on this website being updated and back online. Again, thank you to my colleagues and very much thanks to the whole historic preservation office. My regards to Mr. Garrido, who has done significant work on the burial site and lend his expertise. And I want to thank him for that. He's been with the office for very many years and his input is very valuable. And thanks to both of you for all your work and to all your staff. So Sizus Massey and look forward to, you know, detailed discussions more about the MIT negotiations and the rest of the rebury. Sizus Massey, todos.
Sizus Massey.